Good morning, I'm Carol Cook, Chairperson of the Pinellas County School Board. It's 10 o'clock and I call the June 23rd, 2020 Regular School Board Meeting to order. Before we do anything, let me call roll to make sure that we know who's present on our virtual dais. Ms. Long?
Here.
Mrs. Kane?
Here.
Dr. Carr?
Here.
Mr. Dudley?
Here.
Ms. Flowers?
Here, good morning.
Dr. Grego?
Here.
Dr. Corbett?
Here.
Mr. Herbert?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Kupersky?
Here.
And Mrs. Simonetti?
Present.
Thank you. Although the restrictions have been put in place due to the COVID-19, we are being loosened in an abundance of caution, we are going to continue holding our meetings virtually, so that we may safely accommodate all necessary staff and the members of the public. While meeting virtually, we will attempt to keep our meeting procedures as consistent as possible, however, some changes are necessary. Before we proceed, I want to review our virtual meeting procedures for all that are listening. We are all in separate locations, but each board member, as well as Dr. Grego and other district staff who need to speak, will be able to comment as needed. As Chairperson, I'll continue to lead the meeting and we'll work through the agenda as usual. Regarding public comment, we have posted our procedures for submitting public comment on our website, as well as publish it in the newspaper. I'll share those procedures now for those who have not seen it. Anyone wishing to submit a comment for any of the speaking opportunities under our policy may do so in one of two ways. First, you can send a comment in writing by the following, thank you, following ways. You may send it to publiccomment@pcsb.org. Second, you may call 727-588-6122 and orally provide the comment, which will be transcribed. All comments submitted prior to the start of the meeting have been sent to all school board members and the superintendent prior to the meeting. For all comments submitted after the start of the meeting but prior to the consideration of the relevant portion of the agenda, district staff will strive to immediately send them to school board members and superintendent. All public comments timely received will be appended to the minutes of the meeting. Lastly, I want to thank everyone for their interest in Pinellas County schools and ask you, we continue, you can, we ask that you continue to support public education, not only during this period, but also after we overcome the current challenges. And we will all continue to strive for 100% student success now and in the future. So with that, I will begin our published agenda. For our invocation this morning, I would like to welcome Pastor Oliver King from Restoration Ministries in Largo. Pastor Oliver, are you with us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, thank you. Well, again, I thank God for this opportunity, thank you all for allowing me to just say the invocation and inviting me back to do it again. My prayer is that, again, that we all do the things that, you know, that the community, the schools and everything that is required of us. Let us pray. The heavenly Father, oh God, we thank you, we take this moment to say thank you for your many blessings that you've shown us each and every day. You have blessed our city, our community, our government, you've blessed our schools, and we thank you for your hands of protection on the many families that live in our great city. We ask now for instructions and understanding in this meeting today, help us to hear and to understand and to learn from one another. We ask that you continue to bless us, bless our government, our school, our officials, our families, and everyone that make up this great city and community. Bless the homeless also, and those that are in need and help of assistance. Lastly, again, we ask that you bless our country, our president, and we forever thank you, God, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor King, we appreciate you joining us. Throughout our time of virtual meetings, we've continued to feature some of our students, and this morning, we have someone to help us recite the Pledge of Allegiance. And it will be Jordan Foreman, from the class of 2020 Saludatorian from Northeast High School. It's easy to say, right?
One nation.
Good morning.
Good morning, class of 2020, family, friends, teachers and staff. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silent reflection. I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jordan, for leading the Pledge of Allegiance and the rendition of the National Anthem was done for us by Seminole High School, and it was beautiful, thank you very much. This morning, we have a brief video to share. Every year, our summer STEM camps are extremely popular and seats fill up fast. Last year, we had approximately 300 students participate. This year, because we're conducting the STEM camps virtually, we were able to accommodate 1,200 students. The camps are featuring activities such as mobile app development, computer programming, video game design, hands-on building, engineering design challenges, and robotics. So let's hear more details from Laura Spence, the district's K-12 STEM specialist.
So today, we are at Pinellas Technical College Clearwater, and it's an exciting day for the virtual STEM Summer Camp program, because we have 10 teachers here that are packing hundreds of bags of STEM Summer Camp materials. So in these bags, parents are going to come by, they'll pick up robotic kits, they're going to pick up STEM challenge materials, and this is all done so that families don't have to buy anything, and that they can have, take this home and have their students do STEM challenges and STEM content without spending anything.
We're going to build batteries out of pennies and then light these light bulbs with them. So it'd be very exciting.
This is my second summer doing summer STEM academies, camps, but this is definitely uncharted waters we're going through. I'm doing second grade again. We are using the platform Wonder Workshop. Normally, we use dot and dash in our classroom STEM academies throughout the school year, but Wonder Workshop has just come out with a virtual dot and dash that we will be using a special new program to virtually code these robots online, since they will not have the physical ones in front of them like they would in the normal classroom.
This has never been done before, and we're doing it on such a large scale, so we're going to have upwards to 1,600 students enrolled. So that's a lot of families and students engaged in STEM education. It's a great opportunity for Pinellas County students. We're here at Pinellas Technical College Clearwater Campus, and today is a big day for us. We have over 500 parents that are coming to pick up STEM Summer Camp materials. These are not just any materials, these are materials to teach our virtual STEM Summer Camps. So students get to collect them today with their parents, they take them home, and they meet us online virtually. We're offering 20 virtual STEM Summer Camp courses. Some of those courses include virtual Minecraft, it includes STEM challenges, we get to do robotic builds, where students are going to build a structure, whether it's a car, whether it's a building, and then they get to redesign it. So they're here picking up the kits for that. And today, we talked to parents and students, and they are so excited to become part of the 2020 Virtual STEM Innovation Summer Camp Program.
Well, I'm excited about the program, about all the science experiments they're going to do, and the sustainability camp is the camp we're doing, and gives them something to do over the summer, keeping them busy. They love the science and math.
You're welcome, have a good day, thank you for doing it.
They really like science, they enjoy doing projects. Because I want them to, to learn something new.
So you have a daughter that's enrolled in our STEM Summer Camps, and she's going to be taking our Minecraft and our sustainability courses. So why did you decide to sign her up for our virtual STEM Summer Camps?
Well, number one, it's always a good idea to keep them learning in the summertime, so that's, that's good. But also, given the pandemic and everything like that, we thought it would be a good idea to try to do some extra, extra work over the summer to make sure that, luckily, she, she did not fall behind.
Nate Schuber, one for Minecraft and one for sustainability. So Lauren, what excites you most about taking both of these courses?
Um, mostly being able to create functioning things and being able to play video games more, because like Minecraft is fun.
Good, good, good.
Looks like it's a lot of fun as well. Thank you Laura, and all the STEM teachers for providing a robust summer program, we add a huge thank you. Dr. Grego, are there any amendments to today's agenda?
Yes ma'am, Chair and School Board Members, I have three amendments to the agenda. They all center around administrative appointments, as you know. One of this board, the boards and certainly mine and staff's goal is to always have all administrators in place by the middle or by the end of July, prior to the beginning of the school year. And I can say to you, early on, the third, middle of June, that we are ahead of schedule than we've ever been before, we just have a few more appointments to make. And so, I do appreciate the board's willingness to, for me to walk in a few of these, because we were interviewing as recently as yesterday, so that people can get started. And if there's ever a summer, we want everyone on deck and, and working, this is the summer. So I have three amendments, 7.27, 7.28, and 7.29. 7.27 is the superintendent's recommendation to appoint, to appoint Shonda Saunders to administrator, to administrator Department of Juvenile Justice Educational Alternative Services effective July 1 of 2020. 7.28 is a recommendation to approve the administrative appointment of Jennifer Chenier to Assistant Principal at Clearwater High School effective July 20th of 2020. And 7.29 is the approval of administrative appointment of Jaylene Vogel to the Assistant Principalship of Eisenhower Elementary School effective also July, effective July 27th of 2020. That concludes my amendments to the agenda.
All right. Regarding the amendments to the agenda, I find good cause to amend the agenda as follows. To request approval of the administrative appointment of the administrator for the Department of Juvenile Justice Educational Alternative Services, request approval of the administrative appointment of the Assistant Principal at Clearwater High School, and request approval of the administrative appointment of the Assistant Principal for Eisenhower Elementary School. Board members, are there any items that you have to pull from the consent agenda? All right, seeing none, do we have a motion to adopt the agenda as amended?
Motion for approval.
Okay, Mr. Dudley?
Second.
And Ms. Long? All righty, so we have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda as amended. I will take a roll call vote. So Ms. Long?
Approved.
Mrs. Kane?
Approved.
Dr. Carr? Thank you. Mr. Dudley?
Approved.
Ms. Flowers?
Approved.
And Carol Cook approves also. All righty, so, there are no special order agenda items this morning, so we will move to the public comment area. And we have received public comments via the methods that we talked about earlier, the public notice and the district website, that we explained. There were no comments for the agenda items at this time, but there are comments that we received, general comments regarding the opening or reopening of school. There is no unfinished business, so we will move to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I approve.
All right. Ms. Long and Mr. Dudley, seconded. They will do a roll call vote, all in favor will say aye. Mrs. Long?
Aye.
Mrs. Kane?
Aye.
Dr. Carr?
Aye.
Mr. Dudley?
Aye.
Ms. Flowers? Ms. Flowers, your microphone is muted.
I'm sorry, yes. I'm trying to click it in it, yeah.
Yep, okay, and Carol Cook, yes. For our non-consent items, our first is to request approval of the three-year research agreement, including professional development support with the University of Florida Board of Trustees. Do we have a motion?
I motion.
Ms. Long, do we have a second?
Second.
All righty, Dr. Grego?
Yes ma'am, Chair and School Board Members, as you saw from our last workshop, a great emphasis is being placed throughout the state and certainly in Pinellas County is leading the way in terms of placing emphasis on literacy and reading instruction, especially at the primary years of elementary school. Mr. Hendrick in the Teaching and Learning Division is taking on everything from BPK to K1 and 2, so with the goal that we have a minimal of 70% proficiency by third grade. So even as we described the CARES Act and the resources being put into early literacy, our district was ahead of that, and saying that we also have a referendum that is supporting literacy in our school district. And I want to say to, thank you to the bold moves that you see here in this agenda item, partnering with a well-known entity to, to train teachers, train reading coaches and so forth, to really build our own capacity in Pinellas County for excellent literacy instruction in the early grades. And so I'm going to ask Mr. Hendrick, who's the Associate Superintendent for Teaching and Learning, to just describe what this agreement is looking at and how we're going to truly benefit from it.
Thank you, Dr. Grego, and good morning, Board Members, members of the public. I'm Kevin Hendrick, Associate Superintendent for Teaching and Learning, and it's my pleasure to present this research agreement item to our school board this morning. Board Members, as you recall, about two years ago this month, we began a K-5 literacy audit to examine the practices and curricula in our elementary schools. There were many strengths from that audit, but one of the areas in which we cited for improvement was support for kindergarten through second grade teachers in teaching reading, specifically multisensory systematic evidence-based reading. At the same time, about two years ago, state legislation required that most elementary school teachers become reading endorsed, and they charged the University of Florida's Lastingur Center with developing a competency-based online tool to help teachers obtain the endorsement. Called the Literacy Matrix, it's the first of its kind, which is competency-based, and allows teachers to test in and then receive instruction on the parts of reading that they need assistance with. Pinellas County Schools led the way with 50 teachers in the first statewide pilot with the University of Florida, and we had great success. From that, we continued conversations with the University of Florida's Lastingur Center to find out how we could support additional teachers at no cost to the teachers in earning their reading endorsement, but also growing our practice as a district. The agreement before you is for three years, and includes access for hundreds of Pinellas County teachers and reading coaches to the Literacy Matrix. It also makes this agreement unique, unlike other districts in the state, where the University of Florida will provide specific professional development for district staff, school administrators, and teachers, so that this support can go beyond just the taking of the Literacy Matrix endorsement, and be systemic, and build capacity throughout the next three years. This agreement is also supported and has been developed in collaboration with the Pinellas Education Foundation, and aligns to other reading resource initiatives such as reading recovery and our curriculum modules that are supported. As Dr. Grego mentioned, it happens that this agreement has been in development for quite some time, but is exactly the type of item that the CARES Act has asked us to do. The funding for this will be supported by our referendum, and we're excited to bring it to you today and request approval.
Very good, thank you. We, are there any questions or any discussion on part of the board members? Okay, I'm not seeing any hands being raised, so we will move on. We have a motion by Ms. Long and a second by Mr. Dudley to approve the three-year research agreement, including professional development support with the University of South Florida Board of Trustees. All in favor will say aye as we do the roll call vote. Mrs. Long?
Aye.
Mrs. Kane?
Aye.
Dr. Carr?
Aye.
Mr. Dudley?
Aye.
Ms. Flowers?
Aye.
And Carol Cook? Aye. Our next item is to request approval to purchase the computers to support Pinellas County Schools Connects Initiative. We have a motion.
A motion?
Okay, Mrs. Kane with a second, Ms. Long made the motion. Dr. Grego?
Yes ma'am, Chair and School Board Members and, and the public, I, I do want to express to the public who are listening and might listen later, that this school board sat through about a four-hour presentation this past Tuesday, which we discussed many very important topics, one of which was the one-to-one, as we're calling PCS Connects Initiative, and what we learned from the last nine weeks of school, and what we weren't going to give up or go backwards with that. And as the board members saw our excitement with it, I certainly want the public and our parents and students to join in on that. And we saw that our, our students logged in over a million times every single week in the engagement. There was some frustration, as we certainly know, and as with anything new, but we've also improved upon it within nine weeks, and we believe it, we're going to, as we talked about it, get a new LMS system that is going to even provide greater interaction for instruction, remote instruction. But the goal really, as we described last week, isn't that of remote instruction, but it's rather the expansion of the most powerful tool that we have in, in instruction, and that is a highly effective teacher in every single classroom. And so we centered, if you remember those circles where we said, we're going to start with the most effective teacher in classrooms, and then we're going to provide equitable access to every single student in this community and in our school district. And that equitable access is going to mean that we're not going to have some, but all students have a laptop computer of a certain quality that we can do and see their face in video and, and have a lot of other features that we were doing almost 100%, but not quite when we had to quickly transfer and distribute about 26,000 computers. So we've developed this plan, and this plan is one of the most exciting things we've done as, as a district, that in our, when we return back to school, to whatever shape, form that we do, when we will have the capability of, as I use this term during our workshop, of pivoting. And even if everything goes really well, what we're seeing is that we will have the opportunity for us to enrich the teacher-student curriculum and the curriculum inside the classroom. We have the opportunity to provide extended help or extra help for students who perhaps are struggling with content or course material. We have the opportunity, for the first time ever, to actually put our core curriculum online, so that our community partners and others can help us and not be so isolated in, in that work, and that is a huge undertaking. And we also have the opportunity like never before, you hear parents to say, I wish my son or daughter could have some extra help or just some skill development. They get it, but they need to practice, and how does that practice, what does that practice, and how, how do they do it? And then, for some of our students who really, I mean, all of our students are gifted and talented, in my opinion, but many of them, they, they could use this opportunity to explore, explore something that they're truly passionate about. So we see this five-step approach to expanding the school day, extending that learning opportunity very differently, and each and every one of our scholars can, can fall into one of these pathways. At times, students might want to explore, at times, students need extra help, at times, students will want to develop and practice their skills development, and at times, our community and students, perhaps in, during a class lesson, didn't quite get it, and would like to listen to that lesson, or a lesson presented by somebody else on the same material, just presented differently. So we see this tremendous expansion of the instructional program in our district, and we're calling it PCS, or Pinellas County Schools Connects, and we want our, our families and students to be highly connected during this next year. The agenda item that you have in front of you is such a purchase, it's a purchase of 42,000 laptops. And I'm going to ask Mr. Hendrick to, to briefly go through some of the scenario that we presented during the workshop, of how we're going to roll this out. It's not going to happen overnight, it's not going to happen in, in one year, but it's going to, we're going to make a huge chunk, and we're going to be spending and using the CARES Act as it was designated and designed to use, and that is, is to eliminate the digital divide, not to narrow it, not to hope that it's, it's closing, but absolutely to eliminate it in Pinellas County. And we're going to be very aggressive in that, and we're going to be equitable across our entire district, so that every student has these, the same opportunities. So Mr. Hendrick, and then I welcome the board, any questions that may have, that perhaps from last week's presentation to this week, you, you've had and are able to generate some questions. Mr. Hendrick?
Thank you, Dr. Grego, and good morning again, Board Members, staff and the community. I'm Kevin Hendrick, Associate Superintendent for Teaching and Learning, and as Dr. Grego outlined, we're excited to present PCS Connects, a new initiative to leverage this moment in time and the CARES dollars to support our students and teachers in a way that we've never done before. We shared last week at the school board workshop that we never want to have a time again where we have students who do not have access to technology and the internet in their home, that what we've learned by giving out and distributing 26,000 devices to our students, as well as hotspots and partnering with community partners to bring the internet to students' homes, is that students will achieve if given the resources. We outlined for you last week, and I'll share again just briefly, some of the opportunities for students and staff as we move forward. As Dr. Grego talked about, our core curriculum will shift from what has been in paper and pencil and online and available to teachers, but now student-facing and parent-facing, for students to have the opportunity to re-watch, relearn, and connect with resources at home anytime of the day. Likewise, parents can connect with their children to help them and support core curriculum. We'll continue with face-to-face as our main means of mode of highly effective instruction, but we'll extend that through enrichment, through extra help, through skill development, and through exploration. And we have a number of ways to connect these resources from our classrooms out to students anytime, day or night. We know that this is an important issue with our teachers and our staff, because we've asked them. We've partnered with Pinellas County Classroom Teachers Association, we held a convening of some of the best digital learning teachers over the fourth quarter of the school year as nominated by their principals, we surveyed thousands of teachers to get their feedback on how they would use the curriculum resources and technology if they knew students and families would have access. families would have access all the time. And of course, as board members, you've heard from the public of our successes and our areas for opportunities for improvement, and we tried to address those in this PCS Connects Plan. In the last couple of weeks, the board has already taken action to support this. Last board meeting, you approved NearPod, and at the workshop, you engaged in a NearPod activity, where you saw what it's like to be able to have equity of voice and the opportunity to participate in something that's engaging and digitally exciting for both students and teachers. Just a few minutes ago, on the consent agenda, you approved the Canvas Learning Management System, which will address one of the largest complaints from the public and from our teachers in that there's too many places to go to find the resources that are available. Once they found those resources, there was success, but using a learning management system will help bring a standardized way of delivering curriculum across all grade levels and all classrooms. And a few months ago, you approved the Naviance College and Career Ready Curriculum and the opportunity for students to learn and engage online through that. Prior to us adopting PCS Connects, those opportunities still would have only been available to families who had technology or directly in schools. Now it's available 24 hours a day to families, helping to close that digital divide and also supporting our Elevating Excellence work. So what does the plan look like? It will begin with this computer purchase, which providing a device, one-to-one device, a Dell two-in-one with a camera, speakers, and a tablet to every student in grades four through nine later on in August and September. Over the course of the next several years, it will continue with providing devices at two grade levels at a time until we've outfitted all students in grades one through 12. I want to pass it to Dr. Corbett, who will share a little bit on the details of that, and then bring us back for any questions. Dr. Corbett?
Thank you, Mr. Hendrick. As Mr. Hendrick said, what we're asking for today is a purchase of 42,000 devices. We will take those 42,000 devices, as well as the 26,000 devices that we distributed in March, and we will reallocate those across the grade levels, as he described, grades four through nine will each be, each student will be issued their own device, and then the rest of the students, there's approximately 13,000 students in grades K through three and 10 through 12, who will need to have a device that they can take home. This will provide us plenty of devices, so those students will be able to have a take-home device that they can keep at their home, and then there will also be plenty of devices to distribute to the schools to use in regular daily classroom instruction for grades K through three and 10 through 12. Just to reiterate that the funding for this this year is coming, it's a combination of the CARES funding and our regular capital outlay budgeted amount that we have for student computers in our refresh program, and then in the subsequent years to keep this initiative funded, it will all come from our regularly budgeted student refresh allocation of $6 million a year. So we are recommending today that you approve this agenda item.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hendrick and Dr. Corbett. We have, is there any discussion? Board members, any questions?
We have a question.
Okay, Ms. Long?
Yes, I just want to say thank you. As a former teacher and still connected to many teachers, this is absolutely wonderful. As a parent, I mean, we are just moving ahead at light speed with this, and I'm very pleased. Mr. Hendricks, you've done a wonderful job with your staff. This is phenomenal.
Thank you, Mrs. Long.
Very good. Anyone else? All right, we have a motion that was made by Ms. Long and a second by Ms. Kane. Oh, Ms. Flowers, thank you.
No, I'm, no, thank you. Ms. Long said it all, no need to belabor the point.
Oh, all righty. Very good. All right, so, we do have a motion that was made by Ms. Long and a second by Ms. Kane to approve the purchase of the computers to support PCS Connects Initiative. All in favor, we'll say aye as we do the roll call vote, so please unmute your microphones. Mrs. Long?
Aye.
Mrs. Kane?
Aye.
Dr. Carr?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Dudley?
Aye.
Ms. Flowers?
Aye.
And Carol Cook also says aye, so it passes unanimously. Thank you. We'll move on to new business now with the items introduced by the superintendent.
Yes, board members, thank you. As you know, we will be having a board workshop immediately following this board meeting on our budget and some other major district strategic plan and some other topics, so I'll make this, I promised Ms. Cook that I'd make this kind of short, so let's see if I actually do that. But I do want to, there are things that, the staff did tease me after I said that yesterday, that said, "You better be short, or she'll never let you down on that." But I do want to go back to our graduations that are, I'm excited about, that are going to be taking place at Spectrum Field, July 7 through the 10th, and thank Dr. Vasquez, Ms. Matway, Matt Bloom, there's a whole, Jennifer Dull, and many people are working to ensure this happens. You know, we surveyed our families and parents, and they kept saying to us, no matter what it takes, it may not have everyone come back, and it's going to be, it's an optional event, obviously, but there are a lot of students that truly want that processional, and walking across the stage is a big thing. This graduation will be like none other, and it'll certainly, everyone will remember the graduate of 2020, and maybe it'll be signified by a face mask. We did order every graduate a face mask which says graduate 2020, and they'll all be wearing them, and so it'll be one that we come together, celebrate, and recognize that we're adjusting and adapting to a different type of celebration. But the graduate, though, will hear their name called, and I think that is so important. They'll hear their name called, their parents will hear their name called over a loudspeaker at Spectrum Stadium, and they'll see themselves on that big Jumbotron as they walk across the stage in their cap and gown. And the way we've designed this, and I want to thank the Department of Health and our principals, Keith Masterides was critical, he was instrumental in coming up with this concept, as you know, Clearwater High School conducts their graduation, has for several years at Spectrum Stadium, so he's very familiar with this. But when we started to look at the logistics of it, there was a small team of principals led by him that said, "How about if we're having a walking graduations where families are up close and personal, they have a front row seat with their graduates, instead of being seated way in some seat in the stands, let's bring the families, as we limit tickets to four tickets a graduate, let's bring those family members, those four individuals, right up front and close." And then we'll also be live-streaming this processional on our YouTube channel, so that family members throughout the United States or world, they can watch the graduation. Also, additionally, as many of you, as board members have been involved with, we, each school prerecorded a traditional ceremony, including speeches from the principals, the valedictorians, salutatorians, the turning of the tassels, and more, so they're going to, this virtual graduation's going to be provided as a keepsake that really no other graduation class would ever have this, in addition to the YouTube live casting. So I want to thank, the plan was developed in partnership with the Philadelphia Phillies, Spectrum Stadium, they've been great, by the way. So as a board, if you give me, after graduations are over, I would like to bring members of the Philadelphia Phillies and Spectrum Stadium, just to thank them, they did step up to help us. They saw the need in our community. Doug Kemp, who is one of the general managers there of that property, he's been tremendous in helping us in whatever needs to be done. We're aware that of the positive COVID-19 cases that were confirmed, and as MLB closed down those stadiums, I've had a call into Mr. Kemp, but he's, he will return and I'll let the board know, but in talking with Dr. Vasquez last evening, said the Phillies are going to thoroughly disinfect that, nobody's using that, they're going to disinfect that entire facility to be ready for our graduations. So in addition to that, you know, our educational alternative centers will be graduating, also be having in-person graduations, the same exact structure that we're using at Spectrum Stadium, we're going to be using at Largo and Lakewood Auditorium, where the family members come in with the graduates, the graduates go up the stage, the family members are up close and personal, be able to take pictures, we will have professional photographers at all of these graduations. I continue to say to our families and to all that if you have any questions, we're putting all of these details on our website, PCSB.org/graduation. So I'm excited about it, and if any board members, you want to attend these graduations, we're going to have a stage at Spectrum Stadium, a tent, by the way, it'll be shaded, and where you will stand off to the side, no handshaking, no hugging, as hard as that's going to be, but the graduate's going to come up to have their picture, and the principal will be there, but really, and the people calling, obviously, the names, but they will be at a safe distance, and everyone else will be wearing masks also. So with that, if any, I'll get with, and we did hand out the schedule to the board, and if any of you have a desire to come by, even our EAS, our smaller graduations, but just as meaningful, at Largo and Lakewood High School, please let us know, and any of you want to, any board members want to share in the experience of the high school graduations at Spectrum Stadium, please, please let us know. I want to provide a really quick update on Summer Bridge. Typically, we've had between 14,000 and 15,000 students engaged in Summer Bridge, we have over 21,000 as we are sitting here today on Summer Bridge. Teaching and Learning's done a remarkable job on all levels, but I especially want to focus in on that elementary level, where we're engaged in weekly themed lessons, and we participate in virtual field trips, and we're, they're building on the math, science, and language arts skills through the virtual field trips and these engagement lessons. So really, they never stop and rest on their laurels of last year. I always see that department saying, "How can we make this better? How can we make this summer experience better than it was last year?" Our middle school students are studying the English Language Arts, reading, math, and social studies standards, they're looking at what they might have lost at the last nine weeks, and also preparing for the next grade level. And our high schools are all about, at this point, any student who is unsuccessful with a credit or credit recovery, and also our ACT. Our ACT, as you know from the CARES Act, ACT and SAT are going to be given in the fall, but we also have an ACT administration and reading and math in the summer, I believe. So we're prepping students and working with students both remotely and on their campus. And my last comment is about the summer camps, it's not about the Summer Bridge and Summer Camps, it's all about our district providing experiences, engagement, and really, I could not top that video that you saw earlier, because that video is a prime example of a tremendous amount of work that, I always say to staff, we have a decision point, we could either say, "This pandemic is, we're going to have to cancel summer camps and not do something," or we're going to have to figure out a way to do something differently and engage and recognize that things have to be different, but it doesn't mean that it doesn't have to happen. As you saw from that video of the tremendous amount of work that was, you know, and let me say, in good news, going more remote in the summer camps have quadrupled the number, so you saw those kits that were being handed out, and then figuring out, so now how do we distribute it, now how do we collect it? Yeah, so all of this, this work, we never take our eye on the target of saying, "Let's engage the students," and I know it's going to be difficult, more difficult at times, I know it's going to be challenging, but let's figure out a way how to do it, instead of figuring out a way that it's easier just not to do it. I couldn't be more proud of our staff, because the summer could be a time with everything going on, we just say, you know, maybe not this summer, let's take, let's step back. And I want to say to the parents and to the students out there that you have teachers and a school district that want to truly engage you, so I couldn't be more proud of what we're doing, our journalism magnet programs, our holding classes, and let me also add our fine arts program and our visual arts program. You see many examples, and there too might even be a faster conclusion, "Well, we can't really do this, we can't really do that." There's tremendous examples of media camps focusing in on drawing, painting, printmaking, sculpture, digital arts, there's photography, there's comic art, there's stop-motion animation going on, and there's so many things that are going on in our camps, not only the STEM camps that were depicted in our video. So let me give you another website, it's PCSB.org/summercamps. So, Ms. Cook, I don't know if that was brief enough, but I don't know if you're giving me a hard time, but that's all good news, it's hard for me not to express it. So thank you very much to the board members for your continual support as we go through this summer.
No, you've just shown us that short is a relative term.
Oh, boy.
But no, there is a lot of stuff going on, and I appreciate the fact that you're sharing it, not only with us, but with the community, because, you know, people are working hard in this district still. School is not over, and we appreciate all their work. Are there any items to be brought forward by the School Board Attorney?
No items this morning, thank you, ma'am.
Good, thank you, that is always a good sign. And School Board members, any items to be introduced by School Board members? All right, I don't see any hands. I have one item that I would like to bring forward, and it'll be shorter than Dr. Grego's comments. I know. As you all remember, we participated in the Master Board Training this year, which is our, which is our professional development, and during that time, we examined, for example, our governance roles, we learned about communication skills, and also an opportunity to come together and do activities that would help build trust. Normally, the consultants will come to the district to present the recognition, the plaque that comes with it, but also the recognition, because it's a big deal. If you have really worked to become a strong leadership team, which is what Master Board is about, working with School Board members and the superintendent to develop that, it's worth coming in and recognizing the efforts that you've put through in the 22 hours of training that we've gone through. Well, under these circumstances, they're not going to do it online, but we did receive a plaque that will be hung either in our School Board office or somewhere in the hallways, but I wanted all of you to know that it has arrived, we have been recognized for it, and there was a little brief thank you note for everything that we did and how we are exhibiting the efforts of becoming a Master Board and being a strong leadership team for the students in Pinellas County. So I thank all of you for going through it, and I'm excited that we have it, and we'll just move forward, and hopefully, we won't have so many new members that we, that we have to, hell, wait a minute, we probably will. Yeah, never mind. We will talk about it, but the time that was spent on professional development really does impact the students in the county. There's a statement that I often use with training that I'm doing is, outcomes don't change until adult behavior changes. And by us going through the training, we are working to become better at our job, which will ultimately be better for the students in Pinellas County. So thank you for going through it, we can go look at our plaque, we can do a scavenger hunt, find out where it's been hung, but it is there, and thank you for attending and putting forth the effort. Anything else from any other board members? That's right, we could do that. The suggestion was to put it in the main lobby so everybody can see it, and we might be able to do that, too.
I think you ought to, Ms. Cook, I think, this board works hard to do that. I think when appropriate time, we might hang it up, but I think you should present it to yourselves formally, even if the Florida School Board Association can't be here, we're all members, and I think it's a good thing to honor the work of this board.
Yeah, and we may be able to do that virtually, too, when we all get back together.
When we get back together, yeah.
Yeah, if we can't get someone from here, maybe we can do it virtually.
Sure.
All righty. All right, were there any board requests, Dr. Corbett?
No, Madam Chair, I did not record any.
All right, we will do an evaluation of our meeting. The technology went very smoothly, I don't know if anybody else has anything that...
Once you got our computers updated, we're good.
Okay, once the computers were updated, things went well. Anything else?
A good meeting.
All right, and we heard that it was a good meeting. Okay, I see nothing else, I see no hand, no other hands being raised, so we will move on. Before we adjourn, just a little reminder for the public, our general comments will be received via email or phone, as outlined in the public notice in the district website, and all of the comments that we receive will be appended to the minutes. So if there is no objection, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.